In Arizona, Maricopa County, Pima County, Phoenix, Tucson, certain other cities like Sierra Vista. They got over 50,000 people. They contract directly with HUD. This is why I was saying earlier about the colonias, like Pima County just steps out of that. Because they're big enough to where they can contract directly with HUD. The rest of the state, it's the Arizona Department of Housing, that's the steward of those funds from HUD. And they distribute that out to the rural counties, cities, towns. And the method, the infrastructure they use to distribute that money are the councils of government. So for our region down here, this is us, you are here, Cochise, Graham, Greenlee, this is the Sigo region. So Arizona gets about 10, 10 to 11, they divide, they keep 15% of it for their own administration and things. And most of the rest of the money, you know, it goes out to all the different councils of government throughout the state. And they have a formula, population and poverty statistics. There's three types of CDBG funds. Regional account is what we're here mostly about. This method of distribution, I'll talk about that in a moment, basically means it's Nogales turn. Every year they have a state special projects account, de-obligated grant funds, a little bit of the allocation from HUD, if I understand it correctly, just goes into this fund and they have a competitive round. It used to be 300,000 as the cap, but it went up to 500,000 this year because they updated the application handle, so you can figure. And then every other year is the colonial set aside. So the regional account, we get about 1.2 million for the whole region every year. And that is allocated to each of the four counties based on their population and the number of persons in poverty in those counties. That's how it's determined, you know, which county gets how much. And it's per county, but there's a method of rotation that goes around. So. I want to take this really fast, and that's okay. So they've already announced the state special projects for this, this year. They have to be shovel-ready, it's like the other, like colonias that we talked about. Got to have environmental complete. It's ideal for owner-occupied housing rehab. It's got to be for low to moderate income areas or low to moderate income people. So we're talking about looking at census block groups and how many, what's the percentage of low to moderate income people in the service area if you're going to put a new water line in? Well, when it comes to like housing rehab, you have a property, there's a family, they qualify, it's 100% low to moderate income in that service area. So housing rehab scores very high on these state special project grants because it's, they're always 100% on the low mod. So it's ideal for that, and that's what most people getting, or communities that are awarded that, that's, that's most of what it is, is for owner-occupied housing rehab. Then every other year, there is the colonial set aside, $2 million, up to $2 million, that's for the whole state. Water, drainage, sewer, housing. There's three of these in Nogales. And as I said earlier when we met, 2.5 million has been invested in the last three years in the Nogales, actually in the Nogalitos area and a little bit of the east quadrant. Hello, come and join us. We have a sign-in sheet here. Thank you, sir. Just to give you an idea of the colonias that are in Santa Cruz County, these three here are in Nogales proper. The town of Patagonia, the entirety of it is designated as a colonial. Then you have these other areas around, around the outskirts of Nogales and in Rio Rico and in Elgin. So as I said, there's a, there's a schedule that all the different counties and the stakeholders from those counties, the Sigo has an administrative council made up of high-level staff. We have an executive board made of elected officials from the four county region. And the executive board is the deciding body to decide what the, the rotation is on these. So Santa Cruz is a modified three-year, and I can explain that at some other time. But we're still working on two Nogales projects and it's already your turn again. So that's pretty good modification, however that worked out. Sigo's role in this, we're state mandated to do the application process. We do technical assistance and application preparation. Some communities in the Sigo region hire us to do the grant administration, in fact, most of them do. But you're not required to do it, you're exempt from procurement for hiring COG. But all of the communities have to go through the COG for their application process. That part is mandated by the state. And there's a reason for that. This is the only thing I do, it's the only hat that I wear. So CDBG is, is my, my life. So it's my job to know that, in our department, in our staff, to know that business, so. But we're here because part of the process for getting CDBG grant funds is to advertise and hold the public process, get input from the folks. You've got to have at least one public hearing. You don't have to only have one public hearing. What the city just did too, they did one in December and then another one in January. Then at a subsequent hearing, the mayor and council will make a selection based off of the projects that are talked about tonight in our end minutes. Cities, counties, towns are eligible for CDBG. You can delegate those funds to a sub-recipient like a nonprofit, but the town or the city is the applicant on that, right? Can't be used for regular government business, except under certain circumstances. You can buy fire trucks, you can build fire stations. You can remove architectural barriers and make government buildings ADA compliant ramps and things like that, including in parks. So a special district or nonprofit can get the funds through the local government. But again, it's the local government that's the recipient, then there's a sub-recipient there. The bread and butter of CDBG is public works. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
How are you, bud?
We have a sign-in sheet here for you, sir.
Sign in?
Yes, sir, please. A lot of CDBG funds get used for public works projects. Street improvements, wastewater drainage. You can do housing rehabilitation, owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. You can even use it for down payment assistance for affordable housing. Order purchase land for housing, affordable housing. Housing that's going to be for low to moderate income persons. What else? Facilities. Parks, libraries, senior centers, health clinics, shelters for the homeless, victims of domestic violence.
Can you use the parks for...
Yes, sir. Those parks are low to moderate income areas. Public services. If you're increasing the services of an existing, you know, something's out there providing a service, but you, like you have a Head Start program, there's four teachers, want to hire one more. It's got to at least be a 25% increase and you have to be able to demonstrate that. But all these projects, public works, public service, housing, facilities, they have to meet one of these three tests that was put out by HUD when the CDBG program started. They call them the three national objectives. And the biggest one, the one that is most often the hook for these, is it's got to benefit low to moderate income persons. You're building a water line in a neighborhood, you've got to have at least 51% of the people in that, either that census block, or if you have to do an income survey, as we had to do with Perkins, you have to be able to show that at least 51% of the people in the service area are low to moderate income. And I'll get into what that, what that actually entails in a moment. If an area has been designated by the mayor and council as a slum and blight area, that's, that's the, that's one of the national objectives. That's been done in some of our communities. If that area has been legislatively designated as a slum and blight area, then the income levels of the people in that area don't matter, it's to eliminate slum and blight. Then there's urgent issues like urgent need, they call it. A disaster relief, health hazard, your wastewater plant is kaput, it's leaking sewage everywhere, and ADQ is calling you every day, that kind of thing, that can happen. Northern Arizona, years ago when they had the Yarneel fire, that was disaster relief, they got a state special project grant. NACOG, I believe, worked on that and for disaster relief after that fire. So 51% of the people in the service area are low to moderate income. The building, the public service that's going to be offered, the houses to be rehabilitated, whatever the type of project it is, that's, that's where you've got to demonstrate that, right? So if it's a health clinic for the poor or a homeless shelter. Slum and blight, there's a process. Again, it requires approval by the local governing body. You've got to demonstrate, you can't just do it for fun because you want to get free money from the government. You've got to be able to demonstrate that it actually meets those conditions. Urgent need, problem happened recently, we don't know where we're going to get the money. We're going to get a little money from here and a little money from there, we need a bunch of money to alleviate this problem. It's a public health problem or a natural disaster or a public health issue. So low to moderate income. What that means is, these HUD formulas, Housing and Urban Development, they've got these formulas, you know, you've got to show what the median income is for the given area and that a family, a household is less than 80% of the average for that area. And they're different in different parts of the state. Right now, based on last year's numbers, and they come out every spring, HUD issues these numbers, Department of Housing will give them to us. A family of four with a total income of 39,750 per year, that qualifies as low to moderate income. Under that metric, right now, Nogales, the whole town, the whole city is 53.5% low mod. We expect those usually between April and June, hopefully not June because we're going to be trying to put applications together at that point and it would not be fun to have suddenly the census block group is no longer considered low to moderate income. That's when your income surveys, you have to do that business. It can be a pain in the neck, but it's sometimes necessary as we know. This is a little chart here, you can't read it all that well. Well, I need glasses, I've decided I need glasses, I can read that fine, but that I can't do. 3975 local for Santa Cruz County. That's for a four-person house, household. That's 80% of the median income. So that's available from the Department of Housing, so we'll be... So area-wide, the whole area that's going to be the service area for this project, new water line, new roads, a park. You know, the people that are likely to use that, the people that are in the service area, we'll use census data if we can, we'll use special income survey data if we must. The service area is determined by who's going to benefit, it could be a whole town, it could be a census block group, it could just be a... So in some cases, income qualified benefit, that would be like in the case of a housing rehab project, they would, they would be income qualified. And that is a little more involved than just the surveys, you really kind of dig into it. Usually not necessary. But then there's another group or an umbrella under which there are several groups that are called limited clientele. And these are groups of people that are considered automatically low to moderate income for the purposes of CDBG. Abused children, the elderly, victims of domestic violence, homeless, literate persons, persons with disabilities. So here's just a real quick list of some past CDBG projects, some of the things that have happened in Nogales. There's a little trick here, one of them, the Nogalitos Drainage Project over here in the Nogalitos neighborhood, that was actually the Santa Cruz County flood control district, or the Santa Cruz County was the abducting, right? But the money went in, in Nogales. But this is two projects right here, Perkins and Nogalitos Drainage. You add them up and it's 2.5 million dollars that is beyond, is extra. Not the regular regional account funds, but just extra, you know, that's just gone into that one neighborhood. And I did some math on this, you know, the, the state has awarded 9.5 million dollars in colonial funds since they reorganized it in 2010. And Nogales, these two projects, 2.5 million dollars, that's almost 25% of all the colonial money that's, that's been awarded in the last 10 years. So Nogales is, is Sigo's power hitter when it comes to getting the colonial funds. Trying to encourage the whole region to take advantage of this, but Nogales doesn't need to be told you guys are already ahead of the pack on it. But the Sigo region overall, we've captured just over half of all the colonial funds. So the whole Sigo region really is the power hitter on that, but it's mostly Nogales doing the heavy lifting there. So this number, 383,907, that's based off last year's numbers. We expect usually it stays right around that, it might go up a little, might go down a little bit, that's about right. I think the last regional account, it was more like 320 something or 340, so it's gone up. I think part of that is the rising population. For the regional account, you don't need any matching funds unless it's needed for the budget. On competitive grants like the colonial is very much encouraged. I mean, encourage a 26% to get you into the highest point scoring bracket. If you do 25, you're in one thing, but if you put 1% more, then you go into extra points. But you can combine it with other funds. And you can use CDBG funds to be matched with other federal funds for even bigger projects. You can use your CDBG regional account as a down payment for something you're going to do with USDA development or something, some other federal program. Which could be nice, you know, that's, that's a good chunk collateral for something. And finally, if the project's going to displace people, you've got to have a policy in place with provisions for assistance on that. So after tonight, we're going to open it up to the public and anybody that's here, the staff, the mayor, anybody, Heather, any ideas for things that, projects that could benefit Nogales? And we're going to take those and make a list out of them. They're going to be put onto the next public hearing notice, which we're thinking might be April 1st. Not confirmed, but that's, that's what we're thinking, that'll be the council meeting for April. We'll put all those on there and the mayor and council will make a selection based off of that. In the meantime, we're going to be looking at the projects that are brought up tonight to see if they're eligible. You know, it's like a good idea, but this is the rich part of town, so it's not a good idea, or, you know, it's, this is a good idea, but it's not eligible for CDBG funds for whatever reason. So we'll, we'll do a little homework of our own as to what comes out of tonight and what are good candidates for project selection. And then at that hearing, possibly on April 1st, they'll make a selection. After that, we're going to develop the application with the city staff. Sigo wants the application by July 1st. Because there's always some ironing of the wrinkles, chasing down cost estimates, getting the last things together so we make it nice and pretty for August 1st deadline for Department of Housing. The colonial applications usually are due by August 15th. The notice of funding availability hasn't come out for that yet, but when it does, we'll have that, you know, for sure, right? And it might even be a little bit more than 2 million. It usually doesn't go less than 2 million, but it might be a little more. And so we'll, we'll talk about that when the, the notice of funding availability comes out. But in the meantime, I've said enough, we actually have some people here. At 5 o'clock, there was nobody here but me and Heather, so I'm glad, thank you for coming, Mr. Mayor and yourself, sir. And I would like to invite anybody that has any ideas for what should be done with Nogales CDBG funds to please come to the podium and say your name, tell us what you think.
Have you guys come up with something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. Good, good. Just want to make sure we realize how to take this back.
Hi, my name is Alejandro Barzana, we're the project directors for the Sigo Nogales. We have three or four projects that are water-related to construct and replace old outdated water lines. One of those is called Camino del Sol. That's a water line, a four-inch line that needs to be replaced. The design is ready, and we're working on the final cost estimations. The other one that we have is also Anza, First Street, Anza Drive area. It's also to replace all water lines that are below the minimum required, four-inch lines that, that they don't provide the pressure and the flows that are required. The other one that we have is Noon Street, which is a, is a main project that needs to be done. The design is ready and the approval from the state has been secured. So that's another project that's ready to go. We need to finalize the cost estimation, but the project is ready. And the last one that I...
Do you want to mention the person who has the case qualified that the emergency sewer repair that we have on Grand Avenue here probably won't just in case of...
Well, we have enough projects that we need to do, it's just by seeing the timing of this funding with the requirements, we'd make the repairs for it, for the Grand Avenue would be really difficult. Because we need to do that as soon as possible, yeah. This would take probably a year before we can receive the money. So that's why I didn't put that in there. So we have those water projects that are ready to go and we would put those for consideration for the mayor and councils when they make the decision, they can consider those. Thank you.
Did you come with an idea for a CDBG project?
I would say the council...
Oh, you are?
So my idea was a park, but I was told that maybe we have to lay out the park situation because it's not shovel-ready.
Well, um, did you ask me some deliberation? I, I would like to invite you to come to the, to the podium and state it into the record if you want. Because it's better, even if it doesn't become a project that's selected, it's better to have these things on the record. And that's why we're here, to get all the, start throwing things against the wall. We could figure out later if it's, if it's a good idea or not, we could figure that out later.
My name is Nubar Hanessian and I'm a resident of Nogales, Arizona, and I live at 955 East Patagonia Highway. And the idea was, which is being built behind the city hall here, is the first phase is a city park. That's, it will include basically, I guess, a little, little field for baseball and maybe a little soccer and swings and everything. And then the second phase is basically being looked at is to put in an amphitheater, a little further up with a little walking area and, and maybe a little jogging area also. And that was the idea, maybe some of this money for the CDBG money could be used for a park. And again, it would be a multiple-use park, which would include a lot of area there that, that where there's a lot of residents that could very easily involve, and it would involve all of Nogales. So that's my idea for sometime in the future, or if this could be used now, to be, go ahead and use it for that.
Thank you, sir. If I could just say, there's kind of two types of CDBG. If you recall at the beginning, I talked about there being three pots of money, you know, there's the, the regional account, then there's a state special project that's an annual competitive, and the colonial set aside, which is a bi-annual competitive. When it comes to the regional account, you can use that money to procure design services to build things, okay? The colonial state special projects, you have to have all that done before you apply, it has to be shovel-ready. But you can use regional account funds to procure, you know, engineering, design, whatever. You wind up, you know, you could wind up using a lot of that money to, to do that stuff, but it's, it's still, if, if the mayor and council decide it's money well-spent, well then the mayor and council decides it's money well-spent. So I just want to let, let everybody know that not every single CDBG project has to be shovel-ready, but colonial state special projects do have to be shovel-ready.
So Dennis, we're in the process of flying the Arizona State Parks and Trails for the design of this park that Mr. Hanessian talked about. There's a matching to that. We haven't been awarded that grant yet. However, we could, the CDBG money be eligible to use as our matching towards that grant? And if it is selected as a project will be born? And making the assumption we don't receive that grant, you know, how does that put us with our CDBG funds? Are we amending our, our first application? You know, because if we have two things going at the same time, and one's not awarded, how do we play that out? How does that play out?
So Mr. Kissinger is asking the question of, they've applied, you've applied for a, a grant to design or to design and build?
To design.
To design a park?
To bring it to shovel-ready project.
That Mr. Hanessian?
Correct.
Just, just brought up a moment ago. And the question is about using CDBG funds as match for that?
Correct, there's a matching for that.
And/or what happens if one gets awarded and the other doesn't? And then you've got two pots of money that are committed to the same thing and it becomes redundant?
Right.
The answer is, I'm not entirely sure and I would need to look into that. I know you can use CDBG funds as match for other federal programs. I don't know about state. And I don't know enough about the project. But the main thing is, at least we have it in the record so that it becomes something that's possible to be selected if, if that becomes the issue.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there anybody else?
Dennis, they, I couldn't hear what Alejandro was talking about, Nubar was talking to you the other year. But did we mention both the colonial, the Sol project and the, and the Anza project?
And Noon, yes, sir.
So...
Anza, Noon, and Camino del Sol.
So, yeah, I got, I got one project that we should bring up. So we can get it on the record, something, get it on the list for mayor and council to consider?
Councilwoman Melendez Lopez has been inquiring about building restaurants in all of the city parks. And I don't have a cost estimate for that, but there are several parks throughout the city that don't have restaurants. And she's looking for funding to build restaurants, so we could put that on the record and explore those possibilities, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that's present tonight that has an idea for a CDBG project? I think you got everything.
Yeah.
You did the talking, huh? Well, okay, the other question is, did everybody sign in? Everybody got to sign the, the sign-in sheet?
Yes.
Mr. Kissinger?
I signed in the earlier one, the same one.
This is a different one?
Different one, no, no.
This is a public hearing.
No, no, sir.
Okay, then I, I guess, uh, we're done. And I thank you everybody for showing up. Like I said, uh, an hour ago, it was just me and Heather, and we were like, did this get in the paper? Does anybody know about this? Uh, but apparently. Yes, we'll have all that and that.
I'm going, I'm going to San Juan to my office, this is mayor. You got the speed, you keep eating over there and say.
Well, thanks for crashing.
Yeah, no, no, it's good because, uh, I wanted to hear what the projects are. I, I talked already to staff about the Nun Street and ANSA, and, but, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to send out that part about the park because that's one of the projects that we're looking into.
Would, would colonial's money be of, of, possible for that park?
No, sir.
No?
Water, stormwater, wastewater, housing. But that's all right, you have access, you know, like, if you're in Northern Arizona, you don't even have access to that. You gotta compete statewide for like five hundred thousand and it's very tough.
There's a, there's a suspicion that, that parks doesn't have a pretty good price tag on them.
That two million for colonial would go over there, but.
Thank you.
Doesn't qualify.
When it came out out here, it said parks were eligible or not eligible?
Can you, uh, parks are eligible, right? Regional account. Yes.
Reason?
Yes.
Not here, not the colonial, no. But there was something here that said parks were eligible.